New shoe.
Welcome to Community Watch, Greg.
Doc.
How are you?
Fine, brother, you said.
Well, we are in the midst of interviews with Rome City Commission candidates, of which there are quite a few.
That's good, though.
That is good, it's a very good thing. And we have a candidate with us right now for Ward One, James Jim Bojo, welcome.
Well, thank you very much for having me.
We appreciate you being here.
All right, Mr. Bojo, question number one, what is your primary motivation for running for Rome City Commission?
I got the opportunity to serve on three different SPOS committees as the Citizens Advisory Board, and seeing the work that could be done, the way it could be done, and seeing the projects come to fruition, just kind of led me down this path right here to say, I'd like to see more, I'd like to do more.
All right. What is one goal you want to achieve as City Commissioner?
Well, one goal, that's a tough question, because there's a lot of things I'd like to see, starting with economic development. I would like to see things happen, to bring businesses to the Rome area, bring jobs to the Rome area, different things of that nature. I would like to look at some of the things that happen around public safety, make this a better place for me to live, for you to live, make the schools safer for our children. I'm all about kids, and I love kids, and I'm a member of the New Notmas Club, we're a friend of youth, and I take that very seriously. So my goal, I guess in the end, is to, the state of Georgia is the number-one state in the country for doing business in, so why can't we make Rome the number-one city and the number-one state for doing business?
Our Latino neighbors are a growing part of our city's population, but hold few positions of leadership in Rome. How do you plan to facilitate that change?
Well, I think with any ethnic group, they have to stand up and want to be a part. And I'm not opposed to anyone at any ethnicity or whatever to be able to come and serve, if this is their city, too. You know, I'll listen to anybody, but if you want to listen, or if you want to be a part of it, come on, we'll see how we go.
All right. Do you support the urban camping ordinance that the police have proposed? How do you envision the city's role in finding solutions to issues of poverty?
That's tough, that is tough. The urban camping, and of course, we're talking about homeless people, for whatever reason, they are homeless, and I think we do a good, I think the city has people that do good things with the different homes and the different people that will help take care of them. I think there's a lot of good things, but there's still issues. Those issues need to be addressed, and how they're handled. I think the past, or what we're operating on right now, is this is coming from some of the homes, it's coming from the police department, what to do with these people. You know, really, they haven't done anything wrong. If they do something wrong, they'll just put them in jail. But you've got a lot of them that haven't done anything wrong, they just don't have anywhere to go. And the biggest thing I like about the homes in the area, they're local people running those homes, that if we give money, either the government or an individual gives money to one of these homes, we know where that money's going. It's not going off to a big city somewhere, to who knows what happens to the money. It's there. As far as how do you remedy the situation, that's going to take a lot of good people to sit down and come up with an answer to that. And I'm not, I don't know, but I'm willing, open for suggestions.
Do you believe downtown businesses has been hurt because of the parking ordinance? How would you describe the problem with parking, and what is your solution?
It's kind of like the homeless, I mean, the urban camping. You know, I'm sure there were a lot of smart people got together and come up with this ordinance. I'm sure there's a lot of people that like it, I'm sure there's a lot of people that don't like it. The people down on Broad Street that have businesses are probably the ones that don't like it. They are downtown. I think we've got a great downtown area in Rome. I think we're very fortunate to have what we have downtown, because we go to a lot of other cities, their downtowns have a lot of high crime rate, they have a lot of things going on that you don't want to, I can take my grandkids to Broad Street any time of the day, or any time of the evening, and feel comfortable. You can't do that in a lot of cities. So I think we've done a great job with that right there. As far as the parking, there's parking decks available. The tourism has done a great job putting golf carts down on Broad Street to shuffle people around, shuttle people around, I guess I should say, and take advantage of that. That's a free service that we're offering to help alleviate some of the other things, and it just comes, everybody working together and coming up with the best solution.
All right. Now that the city and county have decided to take a larger role in economic development and recruitment of industries, what changes are you proposing regarding recruitment strategies? How will you measure success of the new model?
Well, first of all, I think every business that, anybody that wants to come into the city, or the county, or whatever, I think every situation's going to be different. You know, they may need this, or this company may need that, or whatever, but I think you're going to have to sit down and find out what their needs are. And you may be able to offer this one a tax abatement, this one here may be not as much, this one here may not want to pay a school tax, this one here may be fine with a school tax. So you have to offset, each one has to be handled individually. But I would like to see us devise, again, a plan, and I think that's in the works between the city and the county, to where we can be fair, we can be honest with anybody coming in, and we can show them what Rome has to offer, which I think is a lot.
Based on the recent requirements that the city schools provide their own transportation, what do you see as the next chapter for Rome Transit? Is it finally the right time to add Georgia Highlands to the bus routes?
Well, yes and no, okay? I don't really know, I have talked with the city people, I think they're, they're concerned about the safety of the children, and so am I, there's no question about that. You know, I don't know that you're going to lose a lot of bus drivers, because they're getting a lot of the drivers that were driving, the trippers, over to driving the school buses that'll be here. And so that's a good thing. Evidently, there was an unwritten law somewhere, something that was being violated, and you know, I don't point the finger to anybody for that. Should, you said, what was it, should Georgia Highlands be?
Add to the route?
If that's possible, yes, but, you know, is Georgia Highlands going to pick up their part of the tab for this? Because those buses are going to be owned by the Rome City Schools. You know, Georgia Highlands is a state school, so there has to be, first of all, let's look, is it going to be, I've not had that question, but is it going to be against the law for the Rome City Schools to be transporting state students? That's something we need to look at. If it isn't, and we can, you know, I think, yeah, if something has worked out, I think that would be fine.
All right. African-American and Latino residents of Rome total over 40% of the population. What can the city of Rome do to increase the involvement of these residents in area businesses, both as owners and as patrons?
I think that when you look at the city of Rome, and you look at the banking industry in Rome, if there's an African-American, a Latino, an Asian, whatever you want to look at there, there are business loans that the banks offer. If they qualify for a business loan, I think that's where it's going to have to start. And it has, just like a Caucasian person, if you go into the bank to start a business, if you qualify, that's your first step. I don't have any problem with them doing it, I don't think that, I don't think special considerations should be made, but if you can follow the steps, you can follow everything else, that's fine, everybody's, I mean, we're in America, come on, you know?
Considering the number of violent crimes in Rome in recent years, and also thefts and break-ins in Rome neighborhoods, what would you recommend be done to make Rome a safer place to live?
Well, first of all, the police department's operating probably 12 to 15 officers short. We've got to get that back up to speed. Also, we have a problem in Rome, Floyd County, retaining our officers. Once they're hired, they come out of the police academies, we hire them, and they will go to surrounding cities, surrounding counties, because the pay is better. And I think we need to get, first of all, our officers should be paid like everybody else in Northwest Georgia, and probably Northeast Alabama. Our officers need to be paid, our policemen, our firemen need to be paid. So I think the first part is, if we can up our pay, you know, pay's a motivator. To motivate them to stay in the city of Rome, rather than going to Polk County, or Bartow County, or Gordon County, or across the state line, because once they get the experience, when they get the experience now, they're taking off. They get that experience, they learn the system, they learn what, where the crime areas are, they know a lot, they make a lot better contacts amongst the people out there. And I think, as far as people are concerned, you see the same officer taking care and doing the right thing, that trust and that integrity builds, and I think we lack in that department. Not because we can't trust them, and not because they don't have integrity, it's because they look like they're 18, 19 years old. Let's build a public safety group that we can keep.
All right. Do you believe that the city of Rome is doing enough to protect its historic buildings and areas on the National Register and within the designated historic districts of the city?
You know, to be honest with you, I haven't looked at that a lot, but I do see a lot of buildings being restored, I see a lot of houses being restored. I'm all about preserving history, but I also feel like history is history, and it's just like heirlooms that you might have been passed down to you through your family. They break, they get lost, they need repair, and sometimes it's just better off to do away with them. But if it can be saved, I'm all about it.
All right. We've got about 30 seconds for this question. If elected, how would you plan to communicate with your constituents, especially about controversial issues?
Well, first, I would, I want to hear from the people. I want to hear what they got on their mind. I mean, just because we've got nine people sitting up here making decisions for the city, we've got to get out and find out what do they want, what do they need? And that's what I would do. As far as the other commissioners, I would be in contact with them on everything.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bojo. We're out of time, running for Ward One.
Yes.
Thank you, and we'll be back with another candidate, stay with us.
Your life is filled with opportunities to show the world you can take charge. It's waking up each day with a mission. It's working each day toward a goal. It's choosing to rise. It's charging forward with a purpose. It's changing the course of your life and taking charge of your future. If you're ready to be a take charger, enroll at Georgia Highlands College today.
Welcome back to Community Watch. Our next candidate for Rome City Commission is Mr. Mark Cochran, who is running for Ward One.
That's correct.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Mr. Cochran, what is your primary motivation for running for Rome City Commission?
I believe that the city of Rome has a vision problem. I believe that the city has been doing a good job of keeping a steady hand on the wheel, but sometimes you just kind of need to jerk it a little bit and put your pedal to the metal. I think we have an issue with just seeing where we're going to be in 10 or 20 years, or even five years out. And as an architect, my job is kind of to imagine what things can be, what the possibility or the opportunity of something that is in one form can take in another. And so I see the potential of Rome to be immense, and so I think I can help it get it there, so that's why I'm running.
All right. What is one goal you want to achieve as City Commissioner?
That's a really good question, I have so many. Let me pick one real quick. Creating a feeling of ownership for everyone in the center of our city. In other words, Broad Street doesn't belong to a few, it belongs to everybody. And I want everybody to be able to feel like they can come down there and just embrace the wealth of entertainment and possibilities that exist there. And I believe that, starting with the infrastructure of Broad Street and actually making it look good again, is probably a first good step, but there are many more steps after that. That's one I would take.
Our Latino neighbors are a growing part of our city's population, but hold few positions of leadership in Rome. How do you plan to facilitate that change?
I would like to talk about NPUs, Neighborhood Planning Units. And so essentially, every neighborhood would have its own planning unit, and they would have saying over zoning and so forth and such. But you're right about that, because I was looking at the census statistics before I came, and 15% of the population in Rome is non-white or Hispanic, and they are not represented hardly anywhere. But I think a good start is with the NPUs. It gets them in on the local neighborhood level, and then from there, they feel comfortable with the growing leadership out of that, that they could possibly, hopefully, in the future, run for a city commission seat, or something even bigger.
All right. Do you support the urban planning ordinance, I mean, sorry, the urban camping ordinance that the police have proposed? How do you envision the city's role in finding solutions to issues of poverty?
The poverty one, I have much smarter people than myself have tried that one. I don't know where to start on that one. The urban camping one, I'll be glad to talk to. My wife, you know, full disclosure, is on the board of the Davy Shelter, and so Devin is an amazing leader for the Davy Shelter. And I had, and I was very apprehensive about the urban camping, because I think a lot of it was conflated with panhandling. So we're having trouble with panhandling, therefore, we should have not only a panhandling ordinance, but an urban camping ordinance as well. My issue with the urban camping ordinance is I understand that Chief Downer McKinney needs a tool, and I appreciate that. But it has the opportunity to be understood in such a wide manner that, and I'm not saying anybody would do it now, but who knows who will be chief of police in 10 years from now, and who knows who will be on the city commission 10 years from now? And I believe that, as it's currently written, it has the ability to be abused and misused. It essentially, and while nobody is saying it, it essentially outlaws homelessness in Rome. Now, my understanding is we, between Devin and Downer McKinney, they have come to an agreement, and I believe both of them are working in goodwill, and they believe that each can help the other. And so I think for the current time, what they've come to an agreement for, I'm okay with, but I want to keep a very close eye on it in the future.
Do you believe downtown business has been hurt because of the parking ordinance? How would you describe the problem with parking, and what is your solution?
This one I know a lot about. My solution originally was for paid parking and metered parking. And so let me back up the decision for that, because a lot of people have asked me about this, and they want to clarify. So my solution was paid parking, with the understanding that the only way the city would ever fund more parking downtown was if they had a revenue stream to fund it. That was why I was for the metered parking. I don't care if we have metered parking or not, if we can come up with the funds to build additional parking downtown. The understanding that I'm getting from the local business owners is they feel that it has hurt them. I don't have any data to dispute them on that, so I'll have to take their word for it. I do know that in 2010, the DOT did a traffic study on Broad Street, and there were 5,400 cars that passed in 2010 on Broad Street. They did another study in 2018, and it was 9,800 cars. We've doubled the amount of traffic on Broad Street. Is metered parking the solution? No, I don't think so, not now, not after the small business owners and everybody have talked about it, it's dead in the water, as far as I'm concerned. But I still think we need more parking, it needs to be more accessible. And the more free parking we have, obviously, the better, but the city is going to have to commit to taking out a bond, or some kind of referendum, where they can actually pay to fund it, where it doesn't actually have to come out of somebody's pocket. So that's a long answer to a short question.
Okay. Now that the city and county have decided to take a larger role in economic development and recruitment of industries, what changes are you proposing regarding recruitment strategies? How will you measure success of the new model?
I think the only way to measure success in the new model is if we land a whale. I think it has been set up to where that is the only feasible outcome and possibility that you can measure success by. And I think that's a little unfortunate. Small business, in my opinion, is the economic engine of this town, along with health care and education. I think that we need to come to the reality, that we are never going to get closer to I-75. As a matter of fact, it seems every day we're getting farther away. Calhoun is currently building, you know, another straight shot to 75. So we have 140 that's still not even four lanes yet, and we're trying to, you know, offload a piece of property that we paid good SPOS money to just give away. Instead, why don't we look at taking that money and putting it downtown? And through infrastructure projects and private-public partnerships, it would be easy to spend $300, $400 million downtown, and people are shocked by that number, but I can show you, I mean, I can show you the numbers where it's feasible and possible. And so the question becomes, do we put all this money into landing a whale, or can we invest all of that money in infrastructure, and downtown businesses, and downtown homeownership, and downtown apartments, where you can actually get a head in a bed, and that's the velocity of money that just recirculates around downtown? So I think the economic development model, in some ways, is appropriate, because if we do land a whale, everybody benefits. But I don't think we should be spending all of our capital and all of our resources just trying to land that whale. And I'm afraid the current economic development that we have is in that direction.
Based on recent requirements that the city schools provide their own transportation, what do you see as the next chapter for Rome Transit? Is it finally the right time to add Georgia Highlands to the bus routes?
I think so, I think so. You know, it's, in some ways, a loss is also an opportunity. Every new beginning is another beginning's end, right? So if you, if you look at it as an opportunity, what was suffering before? How can we make it better? What can we do to fix things that were wrong? Georgia Highlands is an asset, and I've talked with you about this. Georgia Highlands, you know, saved my behind coming out of high school. I would not be in the position that I'm at right now without Georgia Highlands. It's a huge benefit to the community. Why not add a bus route to it? Why not get, you know, get an available transportation for people who may have trouble getting there? I don't see a problem with that at all, I think it's a benefit.
All right. African-American and Latino residents of Rome total over 40% of the population. What can the city of Rome do to increase the involvement of these residents in area businesses, both as owners and as patrons?
I go back to the Neighborhood Planning Unit. You know, it was very successful in Atlanta. It gives even micro-local control over zoning issues, and even business issues to a certain extent. And I understand that the logistics of it are complex, and that it would actually take more time from the planners of the city of Rome, and more times from the commissioner. But I can't think of a better way to engage more people on a local level than to do something like that. And I'm not saying it absolutely has to be modeled after Atlanta, but Atlanta's given us a good model to go after.
Considering the number of violent crimes in Rome in recent years, and also thefts and break-ins in Rome neighborhoods, what would you recommend be done to make Rome a safer place to live?
We've had this issue in Between the Rivers. We've had, I've had my car either pulled on, prowled, or broken into probably at least 15 times in the past two years. And we've tried to search for a neighborhood solution, and we have been unable to find one so far. We have a great Facebook page for our neighborhood that is very active. And so I hate to beat a dead horse, but maybe going back to neighborhood planning, or either a strong neighborhood association that has a monthly calendar meeting with a city commissioner who is designated to just help out that neighborhood? Because part of the issue I had, or the neighborhood had in general, was we would complain about this, and you know, there's only so much that they can do, to be fair to them. And Sammy was very responsive, and he got together a panel of city commissioners, and the whole neighborhood showed up, and we had a good discussion about it. But what if we could have that every month? What if we gave the citizens more of an opportunity to get involved? And so I just don't see how that could go wrong, because I think if we want to police our neighborhoods, it's going to have to start with the citizens, and because the police can't be everywhere at once. And we can certainly stop the crime, but we can certainly put an eye to it. So that's no good solution, just maybe an opportunity for a little bit better one.
Okay. Do you believe that the city of Rome is doing enough to protect its historic buildings and areas on the National Register and within the designated historic districts of the city?
I was on the Preservation Commission for six years, I was the vice chair for three. And in some ways, the answer is yes, and in some ways, the answer is no. There seems to be a communication breakdown across certain city agencies that needs to be helped. But no, in the long run, no, I don't think so. But, you know, it also goes back to your vision on what historic preservation should be. So as an example, a storefront on Broad Street, I see as being completely malleable. If somebody wants to rip out an old storefront and put a new storefront in, a modern-type storefront, I have no problem with that. The issues I have are when somebody allows a plant to grow out of their brick, and it sits there, and the bricks eventually fall to the sidewalk, right? So the city should be more proactive in getting building owners to do something about that. Also, infill is just going to be a fact of life, right? So there are some buildings on Broad Street that absolutely need to come down, and something better going there. And I hope that we can be flexible in the future with how those are accommodated. But with that being said, I do believe that we probably need a little bit stronger preservation. But with that being said, it also needs to be clarified so that contractors, architects, especially realtors, realtors are on the front line, understand exactly what it needs to be.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to have to cut it there, and we appreciate you being with us. We'll see you next time on Community Watch.